Ray.
Yes.
There we go.
Hi.
Don't forget your mic, Bill.
I told you.
Okay, so.
Sounds like it.
The meeting of the Daily City Library Board of Trustees is called to order. Let's, everyone please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go.
Chair, may we?
Is yours on? Your green light's not on.
Oh, thank you. Chair, may we have the role comp, please, or Joseph, whoever's?
Trustee Reyes is absent. Trustee De Vera?
Present.
Trustee Louis?
Oh, present, sorry.
Vice President Chubunka?
Here.
And President Lex?
Here, thank you. Okay, and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda's approved. And I would be happy to have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, April 18th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of April 18th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Barbara, I trust you're going to be the lead director's report person since it's summer learning?
Yeah, that's gonna be me.
Great.
So, I'm positive I've met, I know, a few of you, but for those of you who haven't met me officially, I am Barbara. I'm the Youth Services Librarian for the Daily City Public Library, so anything teens, children's, anything, gonna be me. So, I'm, that's why I'm talking mostly all tonight about things. The first thing we're just gonna do a quick capture of, it's Summer Learning 2017. I've just put about six boxes of just things that are different from previous years, so I'm gonna start off by talking about the things that I handed out to you earlier. What you all received is three different reading logs. These are the different age levels for readers for our summer learning program. Summer learning runs June 1st until August 31st. When a child joins summer learning, they get a reading log that is age appropriate. It's what age they are going into in the fall, and then they receive a free book. That is how they join summer learning. Yep. Once they complete the log by, all the logs have different guidelines for finishing the log, so our pre-readers, it's just anytime they're reading or doing activities, they'll color in one of their shapes. For our K through 5, it's blocks of 15-minute reading and then on top, activities. And then for our grades 6 through 12, it's reading five books and doing six activities. So each one of them are different according to the age level. When they finish them over summer, they bring back their log to the library, and for their first log that they complete, they get a packet of fun stuff. They get a certificate of completion. They get a ticket to our end-of-the-summer VIP party, and they get a $1,000 scholarship raffle ticket.
Nice.
They also, which is something new this year, will receive a scratcher ticket. All they do is they will scratch it, this isn't scratching obviously right now with a key, and it will have the prize that they win. So up top, you will see on the square, it says our donors for prizes include, it's at the bottom in the middle, include Dave and Buster's, the movie theater, Steak and Shake, Baskin Robbins, and Chipotle. So, one of the prizes, like if they scratch this one off, could be a free ticket to the movie theater. One could be a free $10 game card for Dave and Buster's. One could be a free scoop of ice cream at Baskin Robbins, or a free shake at Steak and Shake, or a free kids meal at Chipotle.
Oh, nice.
So no matter what, they will get one of those five prizes from our amazing donors for this year. So, those are what they get when they complete. They can complete up to 10 logs, but they only get that packet of prizes for the first log. After that, when they turn in a log, they'll get another ticket for the $1,000 scholarship raffle, and they'll get some stickers or like stick-on tattoos.
Okay, so it's basically for the raffle, so they'll keep being able to put in for the raffle?
For the $1,000 scholarship raffle, yep.
Cool.
Yeah. You will also see we have our Summer Learning 2017 calendar included, which also gives instructions up top where it says, "Turn in your completed summer learning log in any Daily City library by August 31st to receive a free book, a prize, a raffle ticket for a chance to win a $1,000 scholarship, and a ticket to our library VIP party." And then, yes.
$1,000 scholarship, to what?
It's a scholarship, so they'll get $1,000 put into a scholarship account, and then when they're ready, yes. When they're ready to go to college, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no big deal. Our winner last year was from the John Daly Library, and they went to TRP, Thomas R. Polosita Middle School.
Nice.
And the year before that, it was a Sarah Monte kid, and he was, I think, in 5th grade. Yeah. So, you can see we have all of our great events that we're having on the front and the back at all of our different libraries. It's a mix of DIY things that we're doing, and then also performers that we're having come to the library.
Good.
I'll also briefly mention, you guys don't have a copy of this one, but I was just gonna show it. It's our adult summer learning log.
Oh, I like that.
I can pass it along for you. It's similar to our teen one, so I'll pass it along. For every completed adult log they turn in, they will get, an adult will get a buy-one-get-one free Chipotle entree.
Nice.
I'd like to color in stars and shapes though.
Next time around.
So, Summer Learning this year just has a few different tweaks to it from the previous years. One of the boxes up there is, this year, we rallied, and we're getting it, we're receiving 8,700 books to distribute this year versus our 6,200 that we have last year, and I think we passed out about 6,100 last year. So, we rallied to get more, and I have upped our outreach events that we're doing. So you see, we have 26 outreach events that are planned. We are going to every single elementary, middle, and high school in Daily City, including the Bay Shore Middle and Elementary School, and we are going to, what was it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 preschools so far. And then we have the Cops and Kids event that we're doing, and we usually go to the Kids Club at the Ceremony Mall, and we're doing the Farmer's Market, and anything else that comes up, and we're doing all the big lift sites that the county works with for their, it's called Bliss for the summer camps that are in Daily City. We are, we are hiring interns again this year, but a new cool thing that we were able to do this year by talking to the county and working it out, is we are employing three of our volunteers, that teen volunteers that have been with the library, and each one of them have been with the library volunteering for at least a year.
Great.
So, yeah.
So now they get an income?
Yeah, so now they're making money over the summer for, you know, doing things with the library, so it's really, really great, and we only interviewed our teen volunteers for the three positions that were open, and we had a lot of them come, and we interviewed them like they went for a job, and we already knew them and what they were capable of, so we're very excited to be able to put three of our local teens in employment over the summer. We have new graphics this year by Liz Boyd. The background image is the graphics, and then you'll also see that they're on the logs. That's a new thing.
I love the artwork.
Yeah.
And San Francisco also, all San Mateo County has this artwork, and San Francisco does as well. And then one big change this summer is that we're doing one big end-of-the-summer party instead of four different ones. So in previous years, we would do an end-of-summer party at each one of the libraries at the library, all in one week.
That's a lot of work, yeah.
Do, you know, due to some budget changes and, you know, trying to rework some things, we decided to, you know, come together and do one big party at the Pacelli Event Center, where I'm working on getting a bounce house and having some carnival games and, you know, passing out food and having all of our raffles all at one time and all that great stuff. Similar to last year, it's not up there, we are doing the weekly prize raffles for kids 18 and under. Every time they come, every day that they come into the library, they can enter in a raffle ticket for weekly prizes. So, they're not really prizes, they're experiences. Some of them are, I think, Week 2 is Oakland Days tickets.
How fun.
Week 3 is San Jose Giants tickets. There's tickets to Monterey Bay Aquarium one week. There are some rock climbing gym tickets. There's Asian Art Museum. So it's different experiences all throughout the Bay Area every week over the summer. So every day a child comes in, they can enter in a raffle ticket to get those amazing experiences.
This is your third summer, isn't it?
Yeah, is it? Yes. It's all blurring together, but yes.
It grows.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah.
Very good job.
So that's our update on summer learning, and then as the summer progresses, I'm sure I'll be giving you guys more reports on how we're doing and all these great things, but something I'm really excited to, and something I pushed to get more books, is last year we gave out 100 books to each school site that we went to throughout Daily City. This year, I used it to 200 per site. So we're able to get out more books to our local kids of all of our Daily City schools before they're out of school for the summer, so it's very exciting.
Good.
Yes. I've been to, to the General Pershing, I've been to General Pershing twice to do all of their preschools, and I've already been to Garden Village, and I'll be going to Jefferson High School this Friday, so, all very exciting. Okay, so I'm going to move forward. Do I just click? Yeah, to, yes.
Well, before you move forward.
Yes.
Are there any other comments or questions about summer learning?
Actually, as a newbie, I had a question. Who, or where do you get the donations from, the books that you're passing out to the kids as prizes and?
Yes, I'm so used to doing it every year that I forget to tell you all of the nitty-gritty. We get our money through, what is it again? It just changed. Measure K. Measure K money, and that's distributed from San Mateo County Libraries. We work with all of the San Mateo County Libraries, and they pay for the books through Measure K money. All the books that we receive and all of the logs that we get printed.
Okay, so we don't solicit from book companies?
No.
We basically just buy what we feel that we need?
Yeah, well, they allow, they give out us allotments, and our allotment was originally 6,200 this year, and I, we argued that there's no room for growth, because that's exactly what we did last year, and if we want to grow, we have to be able to hand out more books and engage more children in our community that way. So that's how we got our allotment of books upped.
Okay.
And for the children that finish the program, they get a prize book, which is typically a, maybe a more popular, higher-quality book, and those are books that the library purchases for that purpose.
Okay, okay.
I would also say that the teen interns are paid with that Measure K money.
Okay.
And, so we get three teen interns, and we get a lead intern, and what we did this year that's different is, since I've seen you all, my library assistant, she's not an assistant, but she's my library recreation recreator, Selena Torono, she left us, I'm very sad about, and I have rehired, and his name is Jonathan, and he has been working for the Sarah Monte Library for at least a year. So he has started working with me in that position, and he is gonna be taking on the lead intern position with the county, working with us. So he's actually also going to be paid by the county over the summer along with the three other teen interns. That also is what Measure K money goes to, and then all of the weekly raffles that we get are also procured by the county and sent to us, but those are all donations. They don't pay for those.
Good.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments?
Oh, and the $1,000 scholarship raffle.
That's your Measure K, yeah. I figured it was Measure K.
Yeah, and we're giving, we're giving $1,000 scholarship raffle for all of Daily City.
Okay.
Well, Barbara's usual, it sounds like fabulous program.
Yes.
I'd like to compliment you on the distribution of events to all four branches. That's very nice.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, in the books that are gonna be distributed, are there any books that are printed in other than English or are bilingual? Can you talk about that just briefly?
So we receive many bilingual Spanish books, and a lot of those are picture books, and then we received 500 Chinese books, and we got these last year as well, and I take them out to outreach events, and we have them in the library, and those are very well-taken. People love to take those ones, so we do get bilingual books in Chinese and Spanish.
Now, do we have the ability to request books that are in, that are bilingual, or do they just give them to us and we take whatever they offer?
They ask us what percentage we would like of them, and I give them the percentage that I think will be able to be given away, because sometimes I found with some of our bilingual books, they get left over from the summer because people don't take them as much as they take the other books, so I request a percentage according to what I see on our shelves and what I know has gone out before.
Right. I would request that you think about books in addition to Spanish and Chinese, or Mandarin or?
I'd say.
Well, I know, I know, but I'm thinking of?
In the written, it's the same?
In the written?
Well, in any case, what I'm suggesting is to look at the possibility of books in Arabic, because I know we have a growing Arabic population in Daily City.
Unfortunately, Chinese and Spanish are the ones that they offer us, but I definitely agree with you on that. I think it is a growing, yeah.
Maybe if we ask, they'll think about it a little differently for next year.
I hear you on that. I've definitely seen that a lot in our community.
Okay. Just one last question. You said there's gonna be a consolidated party. Does this include the adult learning program as well, summer learning program? Because I know you've done something for adults in the past.
It's mainly family and children and teens, and a lot of our adults and teens working at the party, but I think Chela would speak more on the adult portion of it.
Unfortunately, I think the adult soiree has sort of been the victim of some of our budget cutbacks.
Oh.
It wasn't ever incredibly well-attended, and it was quite labor-intensive and costly, so that one, we've phased out.
No bouncy house for us? I am.
Darn.
Wait a minute here.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you done?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to find out, when you have the leftover books, can you trade those in for something more popular? What you have left over, does it just get added into?
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, when we have leftover books, which we do not have a lot of leftover books, I will say that, they just stay until the next summer, and then we roll them over into the next batch and try and give them away again. That's all we can really do.
Can you trade within the branches? I mean, within the county, the cities?
Yeah, I mean, we could, but I just think it would probably be more trouble than it's worth, and I don't know if the other libraries would switch with us the books that nobody else wanted. I know everyone, no, I know everyone else has the same kind of troubles and things like that.
Well, I want to add to that, because when I was volunteering at the book sale over the few weekends that we had it, there were quite a few requests for Spanish books. So if in fact, we do have leftovers and we don't know what to do with them, we could always, you know, put them aside for when we have our book sale next time around, and we have more of that option for people who are, you know, bilingual or what have you. So that might be an option, because we had a lot of requests, like, there's no Hispanic books here, and I mean, we had a little small section, but it wasn't enough to really reel people in, because we had all different types of nationalities coming through looking for specific books in their language.
Yeah, of course.
And I said, unfortunately, we have what it is, we have, these are all donated, so, you know, so.
I could take a look in anything, yeah, that we have that's not getting circulated, you know, getting taken out. I would definitely think about that for you guys.
Yeah, that's a really good suggestion, Tricia.
Yeah.
And I know you guys don't need any more activities, but considering that the DCPLA book sale only occurs every other year, you might think about having a presence there because there was a good turnout, and it would be an opportunity to?
Library cards.
Well, a springboard to summer reading for people in the community, although I'm assuming also because it's held in a shopping center, we're getting people from all over, you know, not just Daily City.
Yeah, I don't know as far as the geographic is on the, on the people that came to visit, but it would be nice, because people were asking about the summer programs, and so the one flyer that we had, I think we had one flyer that was double-sided with all the activities, something similar to this but a 8 and 1/11.
That was our springs, was our, that was our, up until August, it was I think April to August, yeah.
Right, right, so something like this, they would, this would be really nice to have there, because we had a lot of children coming through there as well.
I just don't think we had all the printing materials by that point.
Right, of course, of course. Well, I mean, it's something that, you know, we, it's in the planning stages, and it, we didn't really have that conversation as far as, on the planning stages of the book sale, but in the next go-around, maybe we could do that and collaborate earlier about that.
Yeah.
It's just something, good for thought.
Definitely.
Good for thought.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else from up here? All right, Barbara, let's do the ceremony.
All right, here we go. Now I'm going to talk about our new Ceremony Teen Space. If you've ever heard me speak or anything of that nature, I love teens, absolutely. I feel so strongly that there need to be teen spaces and teen volunteers and teen employment and teen involvement. I feel extremely strong about it, besides making a Sarah Monte Teen Space happen, which was like my dream forever. I would also like to say, just a side note, we're starting a teen advisory group.
Cool.
And we're working with, oh, why can't I think of it, San Mateo County Employment, why can't I think of the name of it? It's on our flyer, but they are coming to, we have three meetings coming up in the fall. Our flyer is already on Facebook and stuff, and they're going, one is a resume-writing workshop and application-filling-out. Half of it, yes, for teens, so half of it is, you know, job employment information and how to get into the workforce, and then the other half is planning teen events for the library, and having them plan an event themselves, budgeting what they want to do, et cetera, at the library.
How to balance a checkbook?
This, well, we're doing employment stuff first. So one is a resume-application workshop, one's a cover-letter workshop, and one is a, it's an interview, but it's also communication in the workplace and how you communicate with people.
Customer service in the workplace?
Yes, mm-hmm. So, I feel very strongly, I feel very strongly about growing our teens and helping them be successful.
They need that guidance.
Right, and then also getting their input about what they want to see at the library and really having them take a leadership role in the library. So that's gonna be starting in the fall. But I'm going to talk about our new Ceremony Teen Space right now. At the Sarah Monte Library, what you see in this little collage, on the top left-hand corner, the biggest picture, all those red shelves, that aisle right there was our teen area.
It was?
Yes. There was no, that was just that aisle, and on the other side of the aisle are children's books, and then all on the left side are children's books. So it was kind of just an aisle, a very well-used aisle, I will say, because our teen books circulate very well, and that aisle there were teen fiction, nonfiction, graphic novels, audiobooks, anime, all that great stuff, movies, all that stuff just in that aisle. And looking at it, we had to look around the library for many different spaces that would work to accommodate the collection and also leave some room for growth. I really wanted a wall personally and space to put furniture, so the branch manager, myself, and Chela went and looked at the library, and we found a space that would accommodate all of that, and it's the space to the right of the magazines, if you've ever been at the Sarah Monte Library. So it was a very large endeavor to do this. We had to shift around all of the materials in the library practically to get it over there. Yeah, we had to add a shelving unit. I will show you the shift plan later, so you can see how intricate this was. And staff, all the staff of the library helped to move everything, so it was a very, very time-intensive thing, but well worth it.
Yeah.
So the shelves that you see are empty, that's kind of the midpoint, and they now have materials for children, so that whole area is dedicated to children. Everything got filled back in.
Oh, good.
I would also say that putting the teen space in this area allowed us to move things around in the children's room, and we were able to move all of the teen, or the teen, the teen and the children's language collections into the teen area and the children's area in more visible spaces. So our children's Chinese, our children's Spanish, and our children's Tagalog are now very much more prominent and in the children's area, instead of being with the adult materials kind of hidden in the adult shelves. And then the small amount of teen Tagalog, Chinese, and Spanish that we do have is in the teen area as well and also prominent. So doing that, we were allowed to, you know, separate, one side is the children's, the middle is the young adult, and then on the right side is all of the adult. So we're really, really able to give it its own space. So, and looking at the space, as I talked about, we had to look for location for a space to put it, furniture, what we wanted to put in there, decor, and the collections, which is the shift plan I talked about. In looking at the space, I really wanted movable furniture and a collaborative space for teens, because, and outlets, because that is what?
The number one thing.
That is what teens are looking at to do. They're looking to do homework, they're looking to talk together, sit together, looking to charge their devices. So, on the left-hand side, you'll see we purchased four chairs with arm tablets or arm little tablets. The little table in the middle, if you'll see, we're still at the left. That also adjusts to stand straight up, to bring it for you if you're like on a laptop or something. And then that's a charging station right next to it, and the, yeah, and the charging station has a lot of outlets. It's very well-used. And then you'll see there's a little sign on top, and it's a little trifold, and it says, you know, "This is our new teen space. Priority goes to teens sitting here," et cetera, et cetera. That table right there, I love it a lot because it's a whiteboard table. Yes, we have dry erase markers to check out at the front desk, and they're in a little packet, and you have to be 13 or older to be able to check those out to use the table. And then we have our signage up, and I have little air plants around and little things, and we have cute book, bookends and some different decorative things around in the area. There's also some throwbacks to our children's area. The whiteboard table is one of them, because we have a very large whiteboard in our children's area. That's the magnet wall. And then also, you'll see, you can kind of see the rug. It's the inner rings of a tree, which throws back to our children's area, which has a large reading tree and is a garden-type theme, wood, wooded theme in there as well. So I really wanted to give, you know, ties to bring it back to the children's room, to bring it into the new teen space.
Nice.
Next was decor. So as I talked a little bit about, about our rug and the tables and the different accents, the air plants, which also bring it back. We also have tree bookends, and we have some music bookends and some different fun things in that room. On the left-hand side, this is the big signage and display area. We put books on display. We have the sign that says, "It's the new teen space, thanking our donors," and then also saying that priority goes to teens in that area. And then we're able to put some fun books on display. I have a rainbow display kind of up there. It's hard to see in the picture, but all the books are rainbow-colored. And then I have New York Times bestsellers listed on our chalkboard long piece right there for young adults. And then our teen art contest. Those are some of our three entries right there for our teen art contest. This was also kind of a large, time-intensive thing, although I didn't intend it to be. We put our teen art contest up, and I sent it out to all the schools, and, you know, went out to middle schools, it went out to our high schools, it was put on Facebook. It was, you know, tried, we tried to send out as much as possible. So, that is our winner right there.
Wow, nice.
So it says, "We held a teen art contest for the library to get some local teen art on the new wall for the teen space." So over 20 artworks were submitted for this from local teens. We had over 300 votes that were submitted through our, yep, through the site that I put it up on, including the mayor and some other, you know, our associates and our board and staff, and also a lot of, lot of teens. The kids really mobilized and got their classmates to vote for them. It was pretty cool. The winner was an Etching Santorini by local Kaolin Zhu. He was very, very excited. We're going to present him with his grand prize at the opening of our teen space, which is June 15th at 4:00, and you guys all have the flyer for that right there. Also, all, it says Works By at the bottom. Those are first initial last name of all of our students who have work, and all of our teens that have work on the show.
Oh, cool.
So 10 works will be going up on the wall, and they all were very highly voted for. And then I will keep the online gallery up of the artwork that was submitted, and that was where you voted for the artworks. It will remain up on that site, and you can see all of the works that were submitted for the contest, and they'll stay up in that online gallery.
This artwork by these artists remain there permanently?
It will be, it's not permanent, permanent, but it will be on the teen art wall in that room for as long as we, as long as we want it to be.
I was just thinking, should we, should we, should you hard workers do something like that every year, which would really get the kids motivated to be thinking and drawing? I don't know if it's something, because then having the change over?
Yeah, well, that would be a nice option.
Maybe every other year, I would suggest, just so that the artwork is able to stay up for a long time, but I would definitely think about doing it again, but it was kind of, the way I timed it, it was time-intensive, it was right before summer. But it was kind of, the way I timed it, it was time-intensive, it was right before summer learning. It's kind of like the perfect storm of things happening.
No wonder.
A lot of it was, I will say, um, we are able to frame their artwork to put up on the wall and we're able to give a grand prize and all that stuff from the money that was donated for the teen room. With that little bit of extra, after all the furniture purchases, all the decor, all outlets being put in, all of that great stuff. With that little bit of extra money, that's what we're able to give the grand prize and really give that incentive to the teens and able to frame it to put it up on the wall, so.
You have been a busy bee.
Yeah.
It looks great.
With our budget, uh, you know, difficulties, I, I would love to be able to do it again and give a grand prize and frame all the artwork stuff, but I don't know how it's going to be, so. Yeah.
We could rethink about the prize. Even, even, this is a, we did one, one go-around and if we want to make it more frequent, we can reevaluate that. She's like, don't do that.
We do have other libraries that might want to have, you know, work up and, you know.
Yeah, exactly, the different branches.
Yeah, so we just, um, had renovated the new, uh, space that we're doing things in at Westlake. So we have artwork up from the students who are doing it there at the library. So they're very well represented over there. But, um, you know, down the future, Bay Shore, John Daly, doing some more, you know, comprehensive teen spaces over there could possibly, you know, lend to another art contest, yeah. So there's that, very exciting. Yeah, uh, I don't know, can I click on this and show them the online art gallery? That's the link to it. Oh, I did it, yay. Uh, this is the online art gallery, in case you have not seen it. So these were all the pieces that were submitted. If you click on it, it'll show it to you and it will give them, it will give their artist statement at the bottom. So even though all of the artwork may not have gone up on the wall, they are being represented on, in the online gallery. So, I would like to say that and plenty of people have seen these artworks, so. Yeah. There, I mean, uh, just all the artwork that, people were blown away. I was blown away that we had over three hundred votes for it, so. And that was just from everybody all around the community. Yeah, that one's going up. Uh, so we had all different mediums. We had the, uh, etchings, we had photographs, we had paintings, we had drawings. Um, I mean, just all around. And some were just submitted on paper, as you can see here, some were actually put onto canvases. So you guys will be able to see them if you come to the opening, all up on the wall and beautiful. But. But I would like to just, you know, give them all a shout-out. They did a wonderful job. And Howlin' Zoo, who won the grand prize, I mean, he was ecstatic. And the teacher for Jefferson High School, who had a lot of their students, um, put in the artwork. They are so excited about the opening and they were like, please send us the information, everyone wants to go. You know, even kids who are just, their art are going up on the wall, they want to invite their friends and family, so it's very, very. Yeah, I wanted it to really be a space for teens and for them to own it and to want to bring people to show them this great space. So the shifting part of the collection that I talked about, I just want to give you a little peek about the thing that I had to create in order for us to get staff mobilized and be able to figure out where everything is going. This is very tiny, I just wanted to give you an idea. We had to touch at least a hundred and seventy-three shelving units in the library. So on the left-hand side, you'll see kind of what the collection is. I labeled every single shelf in the library with a number. That's what the numbers are, so you see the location now, the numbers. And then what the numbers are moving to, which shelves they are moving to, and this was all in sequence. And then there are even temporary moves listed there as well. So that's just to kind of, yeah, give you an idea of just how much time and energy and work went into just moving everything around to make this teen space.
You know those little puzzles with the little squares you have to move around, except there's no empty squares in the library, there are full shelves.
Rubik's Cube.
Yeah, I spent many hours sitting with Joshua Reeves, if you know him, um, just planning this out and then typing it up and making sure that there were no flaws in it. And last but not least, uh, just to thank you to our donors for making this happen. The Daly City Public Library Associates and the Carl Geller and Celia Burt, uh, Geller Foundation. Um, that's where the money came from, to be able to purchase all these great things, to be able to put outlets in the wall, to be able to do the art teen art contest, everything, you know, came from this money. And we definitely would not have been able to do it without it. All right, that's all I have.
Great job.
You have any questions or comments?
Speechless now after all that. Good job.
Nice to give you some extra bottles of your bubbly energy. I could tell you're a little bit, you're, you're growing, but wow, I mean, just, yeah, you're doing a great job.
It was like a very, very perfect storm of that ending and then per, uh, planning fall programming and then starting summer learning. So if I'm not as bubbly as normal.
I'm not complaining, I'm just, it's amazing what you're getting accomplished, so, and no gray hairs, brat.
Don't give my secret away.
Really, really good.
All right.
Okay, moving to the trustees' report on the agenda. Uh, there are just a couple of things I want to touch on briefly before we get to the DCPLA report. Uh, first of all, Joseph, welcome back. Uh, you were missed, uh, last month. Uh, Pat Martel did a fine job of standing in for you, but we're glad you're back.
I'll return the favor this Monday.
And I'd also like to, uh, thank Mayor Glenn Sylvester for being one of our audience members. Uh, Vice Mayor Juslin, uh, Manalo. And, uh, Planning Commissioner Pam DiGiovanni, DiGiovanni. Uh, it's always nice to see people out there, thank you. So one of the items that we touched on at a previous meeting, in fact, uh, with Pat, uh, had to do with business cards. And I was wondering if you could just give us a brief update on that.
They have not yet, they're ordered, but they have not yet shipped. I went through a, an online vendor. Um, I would expect them within the next week or two.
Oh, super.
Shouldn't be that much longer.
Okay, great.
I only received requests from, from yourself and, um, from trustee Devera. Did either of you want cards? I'll resend the email.
It's never too late, right?
No. I just ordered it online.
Okay, thank you. Um, and also I was wondering if you could give us an update, if there is one, on, uh, any CPLA workshop possibilities or trustee training?
Uh, not yet, I, I put out another inquiry, um, but the, the volunteer who does the, the training hasn't yet gotten back to me.
Okay, well, thank you for staying on top of that. Why don't we begin the DCPLA report with, uh, some comments on the bookstore, or excuse me, book sale? I know everyone up here was involved. Uh, Lily, uh, you and I worked a shift together, or at least we overlapped. Do you have any impressions you'd like to share?
Yes, I worked, uh, two whole Sundays. Um, it was, from what I understand, Sunday was much slower, um, but it was very rewarding. Um, and, um, we had people kind of milling around and, um, but then the second Sunday was much busier. But later on, at three o'clock the second Sunday, when we started handing out the shopping bags and telling everyone it was five dollars, fill up the bag. But I think the best part was Tricia, Tricia's DVDs.
The infamous DVDs.
Yes, the infamous DVDs. Sylvester's wagging his fingers because I took his, uh, Superman trilogy. But you know what? I was missing two of them in there.
There you go.
And, um, yeah, a lot of folks were buying stuff. Um, there were still a lot of boxes under the table that the second Sunday, we, we dragged them out. And there was still a lot of good stuff the second Sunday. And we tried to hit our customers up with the raffle tickets too. So I think it would, it turned out pretty good. I did print out what Susan sent us and I think you have the same, I'll let you give that report.
I'll, I'll cover that.
And Tricia was there.
Well, and Lynn was involved too.
Yep, the very first morning, I got to take lots of pictures.
Sending your camera.
Mr. Mayor, which were locked in my camera till I got my new camera, so now I have to unlock everything and I'll be sending, uh, pictures out. But, yeah, it was, it was fun, really fun. The kids with their artwork are so adorable and they come in and they're dragging their parents and their brothers and sisters and. You know, so many pictures this year I got of the kids saying, that's mine, that's mine. And adorable pictures of the mayor getting down with the kids to give us the, um, certificates. It was just really cute, so. And we had a good crowd, starting Saturday morning, that's the only time I could go, but really, uh, appreciated it.
Well, I forgot to mention on Sunday, we had, um, Hawaiian, um.
Ukulele group.
Yeah, they were there the whole afternoon, they danced, they sang. When it was lively, the second Sunday.
And Tricia?
Uh, well, first off, I just want to do a shout-out to Susan and her crew, um, that set up everything. Cause I, I worked three, uh, three out of the four days there. I was at the morning session because I was, I'm an early bird, so. Um, but everything was set up nicely, um, very organized. Uh, we had a lot of customers coming in. I was soliciting from outside, going to some of the stores and soliciting customers coming through, um. But, uh, yeah, no, um, I didn't have to do very much though. People were really excited to, to be there, they brought their children along, um. And, uh, there was something for everybody, really. Uh, we had a donation of, um, classic car books. Um, and, uh, they were literally in great condition. And we had young, there was this one, I remember this one young, um, uh, gentleman, gentleman, because he was such a gentleman, but he's a little kid. And he literally was carrying these heavy, hardcover automobile books. And I said, are you, are you a car enthusiast? He was, I love car books. And his mom probably bought like maybe six or seven of them that were there. And they were, you know, hardback books, they were heavy. But she went out and she bought them for him. But, um, it was nice just to see, you know, the families coming out and supporting the library. Um, it wasn't just for them to buy books, but they were all, also there letting us know that, you know, we are supporting our own libraries in our backyard. So I appreciated that, um. And, um, and, and also to thank all of the people who had their artistic, you know, talents coming out, like the musicians, the face painting, Skyland College came out and did the face painting. So the students in the, um, cosmetology program donated their time and did the face paint. So they did an awesome job in that. And, um, um, I told Susan that, you know, we should somehow recognize those, um, individuals who volunteered their time. But yeah, I think overall we did really well, so I will leave it up to Bill and you can give the final numbers on how we did.
Well, I'm not sure the numbers are final yet, but let me just thank every member of the Board of Trustees who participated. Uh, both in terms of your membership and the contribution of your time and talents to making the book sale a success. And to the members in the audience who also contributed to the success of the book sale, uh, through your presence and enthusiasm. The profit from the book sale is approximately five thousand dollars, uh, in round figures. There were expenses of about, uh, five hundred dollars, so, you know, the gross was about fifty-five hundred. Uh, there were a number of in-kind donations. Uh, Kimco provided space for the month, uh, at the mall. Uh, Saramati, uh, provided tables, tablecloths, arts and crafts supplies and prizes. Seaton Medical Center, uh, also prizes, some pastries and juice for the reception. In-kind donations included the award ribbons, art and balloon supplies, food snacks. Office Depot, uh, provided a gift card in pallets and shrink wrap and, uh, some labor for packing everything up once the sale was over. Burgermeister, uh, was there providing gift cards, uh, for the raffle, plus others for volunteers. Uh, anonymous donors provided the Kindle Fire and Original Joe's gift card. Uh, J E S D, uh, Jefferson Elementary School District provided support with tables and the student art contest. Uh, Colma Public Works was terrific, uh, they provided manpower to come in and help. Lily mentioned the musicians, the ukulele group, that was Pat Avaris Group, and there were many volunteers. Some of the peripheral benefits, so to speak, uh, included new memberships. Uh, we believe there were at least four new memberships, possibly more. Uh, a new partnership with Office Depot. A partnership with Thrift Books, who is going to help us sell the books that were not sold at the bookstore. Uh, and the summary is that it was a great community event, uh, lots of work and involvement, uh, lots of physical labor, but well worthwhile. Uh, any questions or additions to that? Okay, well, continuing with the DCPLA report. Normally their meeting occurs on the same day as the Board of Trustees' meeting. Uh, today's meeting was canceled, um, by the chair, Adrian Tissier, uh, because of an attendance issue, uh, which is unfortunate. Among the items on the agenda was the ribbon cutting, uh, for the teen space at Saramati. So I'm glad there was a good report on that. Also, uh, there's an author talk coming up and it's actually, uh, two authors who are going to be, uh, partnering. Uh, one is an author that gave a talk previously, Cara, Cara Black, Black, excuse me, who, uh, has written a series of books, uh, based in Paris, Mysteries. Uh, she's fascinating. And then Susan Shea, who's the author of Love and Death in Burgundy. And, uh, it should be very interesting, uh, since they both write about France in different aspects. This is going to be in July on a Sunday afternoon and I don't have my schedule with me. The, it's been scheduled, does anyone know when that is?
Which one, the?
The, uh, author talk?
July thirtieth, uh, Sunday at four P M.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay. And, let's see. I think that's it for me, uh. As far as DCPLA goes.
Um, Bill, can I add one other thing I received from Susan? Um, she said that there is going to be a Shine Family Day, I don't know if you guys are aware of that. Uh, the DCPLA has a table at this event on Saturday, May twentieth, and she's looking for volunteers.
Thank you, Tricia. Yes, that was out in an email, I didn't have it in my packet, but yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Good.
I don't have all the details on it, but she sent that to me just as a reminder.
Very good, thanks. Anything else? Okay, moving to announcements and communications. I guess we've really covered that. Uh, agenda building for next meeting? Any suggestions from staff? Uh, recognizing the mayor, yes, sir?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, is he in class back there?
No worries. We recognize you.
I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and trustees and staff. I wanted to make a few comments about the, uh, book sale that you had.
Yes, please.
Apparently I was there three days and I earned a nickname, frequent flyer. And, um, I should have listened to trustee Devera because she says, I'll be there on Sunday, you should come by. I, I see you could have got a bigger deal on Sundays, I missed it. I wanted to go down the line. Uh, the first day I went there, and when I saw all the cupcakes, that makes me want to come the following day. But I try not to miss desserts, so. I'd like to thank, uh, Pauline Fong Martinez. When I first went there, she was like a personal shopper. I generally don't read books, but she had me buy books for every single person in my family, to include, I bought one for the vice mayor as well. And that would not have been possible if it wasn't for Miss Pauline Fong Martinez.
Or Ivana White.
Uh, trustee Lily Louie, she's right, she took the, uh, Superman trilogy that I saw on DVD. And she took most of the karate books, I mean, uh, DVDs. But one good thing I got out of it was, uh, a DVD, uh, called Homeland. Homeland? And when I told my son about it, he said, Dad, you're way behind, they're up to season six. So I bought season one and since the book sale, I've been online to eBay and I bought all five seasons. And I've been watching them, uh, it's, it's like, it's, it's an obsession with me to, to watch.
You're watching it too?
Yeah, but I'm gonna, yeah. Yeah, tag on you.
Party was at the mayor's house.
Trustee, uh, Shabaka, it was, uh, definitely a great pleasure to see you there. I felt very warm because everywhere I walked, you say, hey, well, let's take a picture, let's take a picture. So I really appreciate that as well. Trustee Devera? Someone made mention about the, buying the car books.
Yeah.
I'm glad they got them after me because I kept looking at them and my wife says to me, what are you gonna do with those? But, uh, in regards to trustee Devera, I want to say thank you so much because on the first day I bought so many books and they were heavy. She offered to walk me out to my car with the books. And I said, no, that's okay, being macho and everything, I said, that's okay. You know what she said to me? I'll carry your muffin. So she walked with me out to the car, carrying the muffin. But I wanted to say, this was the first time. But I wanted to say, this was the first time I attended a, a, a book event like this. I'm proud of all the volunteers and thank you so much what you do and the Daly City Public Library Associates. It was a fun time and I look forward to it next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to agenda building, not hearing anything from you guys.
Jocelyn wants to speak.
Our Vice, our Vice Mayor would like to speak.
Okay, well.
Okay, come on.
Miss Manala, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I also wanted to share my experience and it was such a great event. I was there on that last Sunday and where there was just amazing, beautiful Hawaiian music that just drew you in. I mean, I had to, I was like, I had to stop, I was stopping by, but on, in all honesty, I probably stayed for two hours because of the music and just how everything was set up, how thoughtful it was, artwork and everything that was all around. And I, I put it on Facebook Live so that we get some folks to see what was going on and try to share it with our community. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for just putting your time and effort really for the kids in the libraries of Daly City. And I totally appreciate it. I did purchase some books and it was a Mother's Day gift for my sister. She has two children. I didn't get to really look inside, but when she opened it up, I was like, oh, you know, I got it from the book sale. Like, it must have been a dedication to someone. And then we looked at it again and I was like, beloved, that's how the author talks. And so it was a signed book, actually a sign by the author. And so it was such a great surprise. And she was like, oh, she took a picture of it and, and so it was really special, so all the good work. So thank you for that and that'll be a memorable gift for my sisters. Thanks.
Thank you.
And last but not least.
Giovanni.
You get to share our experiences, right?
Be there, too? I missed you.
I get to echo all the great experiences and I also found something that was relatable to my, my family. There were these little books and then, and actually it was Lily, trustee Lily Louie, that, that I saw them on the corner. And then they, they all were indicative of the area where my mother was from in, in Italy. And it was the ones that had been missing, actually, after my parents had passed away. It was the last three of the areas because they were, they were all published. And I believe that trustee Lex was there as well when that was going on. So for interesting that, that, that for something that draws you there and it's a community experience and that people, I, you know, you guys really put a lot of work into it. I know that Susan Brizden Smith and everyone does. It's not, it's everybody that works together, but it's such a positive feel. And then, and then now the word gets out and, and as the Vice Mayor said, that when she posted it, and then our trustee Clayton Koo showed up because he saw it posted on, on her Facebook. He says, oh, I came because I saw it on, on Justin's Facebook. So, you know, it, it just, tomorrow, the next year, next year, just hope it grows. And that each of you just know that your hard work and dedication in our community does not go unnoticed. And that we do, everyone does notice it and it comes from the heart. And when it comes from the heart, you can never go wrong. And so I know when people are sitting in certain positions, it's not about the title, it's about doing the work. And we all know that, that regardless how tired you get, it's well worth it. So I thank you for the educational experience, even at my age, you continue to grow. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I throw out one more comment?
Sure.
Thank you guys for all that. No, what reminded me is, did any of you meet Pat Avera, the ukulele? They're, they're really great.
Yeah.
He teaches classes at Dodger on Thursdays. I bought an ukulele for my sixtieth birthday. And, but I, I want to start taking lessons, so I just, if anybody's watching in TV land, Pat teaches down at Dodger, so.
Probably the single most popular class.
Is it?
It's Thursdays. Jam packed.
Okay, well, there you go.
On Sunday, every Thursday.
He's a great guy, so, yeah.
Well, that's great.
Is it? Yeah, give him a five dollar instruction free. Anyway, just wanted to tell Pat, so, yeah.
Thank you, Lynn, for that. And thank you for the nice comments. As Board of Trustees' members, we were really just a small part of what DCPLA, Daly City Public Library Associates, did. And just echoing what Tricia said, Susan Brizden and Smith really, really works hard and does a fantastic job. She's supported by a great board and truly a collection of volunteers that cuts across the community, including Colma. We really act as, you know, two, two communities in a sense, coming together for a common cause.
And many new friends form new friendships.
Yeah.
Okay, now trying to pull out some items for next month's agenda. Not hearing any from staff. If anything comes up, please let me know. Are there any agenda items or topics from the board that we would like to place on the agenda for next month?
Not at this time for me.
Again, if something comes up to any member of the board, please either send me an email or give me a call with your thoughts and ideas. And we'll discuss it and, you know, probably put it up. We have had our public comment, which is at this point on the agenda, so we will move toward adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I motioned to adjourn.
And I seconded it.
Okay, moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.